Mine's on.
Move for German?
Mine's on.
Okay, now you're making me feel bad.
Yeah.
No, we don't have nearly enough workers for a union job.
Does he know what he's doing?
Feel like getting started?
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for the city of Nisswa to order. It is April 18th, it is 7:01 PM. Would you all join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the docket this evening is under, item under letterhead B is the consent calendar. Are there any questions about that?
Mr. Chair, we do have one application that was laid for Minnesota State Association of Narcotics Investigators that was presented today, should be added.
Is this where you'd like to add it Jenny, or does that work for you?
Yes, that would be great to add that to the consent calendar if there are no objections to that.
Okay. Any objections? Hearing done, it is added to the consent calendar. Anything else? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Second by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Open forum. Is there anyone here this evening who has something I'd like to bring up that is not on the agenda? Seeing nobody raising their hand or getting up, I will move on to item number two. Public hearing for implementation and use of body worn cameras, the policy.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Okay, so do we have anyone here this evening who would like to speak on the policy, the camera policy, for the police department? Seeing none? Craig, I mean, you don't have to, but do you have something that you'd like to?
Sure, I just probably would have it from permission to pack it, but I did receive one comment by way of email. It wasn't a concern, it was just sort of an interest that assurances that police officers would have cameras on when they're involved in different kind of circumstances. And you remember the policy, you kind of should have all been, you kind of, see, I think it's a pretty depth detail about when you should and shouldn't be using them. And you're always trying to be careful of your recording to protect people's privacy. I think at one time I said that all the data captured was public information, all its consequences were private or being controlled.
And it pretty much lays out how and when the policy can be, or the, sorry, the data can be released and to who. There's pretty tight restrictions on who can view it, even internally within the police department. It'll be set up that officers can only review their own recordings, not the recordings of other officers, and there's a log system built within it that will let you know who's viewing it and when. So it's pretty, I think it's pretty comprehensive and pretty locked down pretty tight as to keeping track of what's out there, and you know, there's a retention schedule, nothing can be deleted, anything sooner than 90 days, and it's going to be programmed that some things may be kept indefinitely. Just kind of depends on data and all, storage and that kind of thing. So I think it's a good policy, it's required by the state, and this, I did not write this from scratch. I cut and pasted it from the league of Minnesota cities policy, so everything in there is, it's required to have this, so. If you have any questions, I'd answer them if I can.
I do have a couple of questions. One is, are there specific instances where the cameras should not be turned on? I mean, like, period? Could you just touch, if there is, or could you touch on that a little bit?
Well, there's times when you wouldn't want to turn on, let's say a medical emergency where, you know, someone's ill, you know, we don't want to record that, there's no evidentiary purpose for that. Of course, there may be circumstances when you will want to record something if there's a, maybe suspicious circumstances from the medical, the officer has to make that determination to turn, turn the camera on. It should not be used to record private conversations. We won't be meeting with council people and recording them as much as we want to. Think it might be necessary at times, we won't. So, you know, we do, it's, the purpose is to protect the public from the police in a way, and protect the police from aggression, and, but we do want to, we do want to protect people's privacy, we don't want to intrude and have video of people floating around out there.
Well, you know, it is kind of the day and age that we're in, and you know, there's, I mean, I shared with you before the meeting, on job sites where there's cameras where you can be watched all day long, you know, and so I get a sense in a different way what that's all about. But you know, there's, there's certainly, in many ways, to me it seems like it can be as more of a protection for a police department too, is, because, and you know, because we sure see things in the news and, you know, on where lots of stuff happens, so that's my question and comment, so. Others? Okay.
All I'll need is a motion to approve it.
Want to move it up? Is that what you're?
Well, first of all, I think we should close the public hearing.
Sure.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. Gary? Okay. Jacobs and Johnson, so.
Can we vote to close the public hearing, please?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, we should probably do that, yeah. Okay, so, all those in favor of closing the open meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for saying something. So.
Could I make a mo, Mr. Mayor, can I see, could we move item under new business, E3? Do we do that now?
Sure. I was, yep, it's been suggested, and I think that's a good idea, so. We'll move down to new business, under letterhead E, number three, approval of the city of the city of Nisswa, Minnesota, use of body worn cameras policy. And I presume everybody's read it and is satisfied with it. Is there a motion to adopt that policy?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the city of Nisswa, Minnesota, use of body worn cameras policy as presented.
Second with a question.
Okay.
Could we have, add to the motion, would you agree to have the police chief come back in six months and tell the council how it is working and if there should be any changes to it, so we get it right?
I would add that, I would amend my motion to state that.
Six months, much time.
I prefer a year, but.
Okay. Well, as, I mean, if I could, as opposed to adding it to this, could we just ask the police chief to do that outside of the motion, or is there a strong feeling that it should be part of it?
You do it either way, have it on the motion, it doesn't matter as long as it gets done.
Okay. How's the motion and the second feel about it?
I'll leave it on the motion, it's not going to hurt to just review it in six months. That way it stays, it's official.
Second, good with that too?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are then going to close the open forum and move on to D, city administrator report. Jenny, what do you have for us this evening? Thank you.
Thank you. My pages, there we go, reorganized. The only official item I have for you tonight is to approve the personnel updates. I will just note and highlight that we have interviewed and offered tentatively the position of administrative assistant to Donna Karen, and she comes to us with about at least 15 years of experience in another city, and is really, really looking forward to being here, and I think she'll be a great asset to our team, so.
Are you looking for action on that at all?
Yes, please, just to prove the personnel updates.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel updates as presented.
I'll second that.
What is the rate that you want to do that? An hourly rate or what?
It is an hourly rate, it's on our, it's a part of our step schedule, so we're following that, and I want to say it's.
Step one, step two, step three, whatever.
Correct, yes, so it's on the schedule.
One of those.
One of those, yes, but it was within the, we discussed the $20,000 budget, and so I maintain that, yes.
And the other question is, what city did she work with?
Brooklyn Park, I believe, yes.
Okay, other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have questions, and certainly I'll be stepping through some of the new business items later on as well.
Thank you Jenny.
You're welcome.
City attorney, not available tonight?
Tom is out of town tonight, he did provide a memo, I can just give a little bit of background on that, and it is on the agenda as council information for this evening. Tom and I have had some discussions about processes and how committees and commissions work through processes of recommending or filling their vacancies on their, you know, for their, for their committees and commissions. And the planning and zoning, there's a planning and zoning vacancy, and so as they were going through that process, I was learning a bit about how we have been doing that here in Nisswa, and I asked Tom to help me understand what's in our ordinance, and how that's read, and what his interpretation is of that. His memo specifically discusses planning and zoning vacancies, but my intention really was to have kind of an overall picture about where our committees and commissions, how that recommendation process works for the city and being consistent among all of them. And so that's, that's where this came from, just that he gave his thoughts on what our ordinance say and how he would suggest doing that, so I wanted to share that, and if there's more discussion, we can, we can have discussion tonight. I hadn't come to any sort of formal decision or process, but I wanted to share that and get any feedback that you might have, and, you know, kind of go from there, so.
I assume Jenny, you're going to put together a proposal and then present it to us, so.
That's where I was, that's where I was thinking we'd go.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I have the reason that this is on here, that the planning commission took a negative vote on the applicant. The way I read the ordinance, you can read it two ways, the way that the city attorney interpreted, or the way that I interpreted, with past experience. If there is a change to be made, the recommendation from the planning commission comes here for any changes to be made in the commission. Since there was no change to be made, I suggested that it not, it didn't need to be sent to the city council because there was no change, it was just no action. He disagrees, his law degree from a prestige, his East Coast college is better than mine on Tuesdays, so I would bow to him, although I think it can still be read in two different ways, I'll go with him. And I think to make it correct, if we follow his guidance in his letter, I'd like to make a motion to correct the problem if I could, so.
Okay, are you ready for that Jenny, or do you want, I mean, because I'm not sure, you sound like you're working in a process. Don, you're sounding like you're ready to do something, so.
Not her problem, it's the problem created by the sound at all. I think the motion will correct itself. I'd like to move the city council concur to the planning and zoning on the negative vote for the PNC applicant to fill the vacancy as prescribed by the memo from city attorney to April 12th. In other words, we're bringing it forward, the negative recommendation, and we can vote on it, yes or no, that would solve the problem that he's presented in his favor.
Okay. Is that, I mean, this is, I mean, I've heard a little bit, but this is, I'm not, you know, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to pretend to be an attorney, so I'm not sure where in this process we're at, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to do, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but what others think?
I'm just reading his, his interpretation by bringing the matter before the council, that's what he said should be done, so I'm bringing it before the council. It's the first time in my history, in my memory, that it's ever happened.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
What I think Don is saying is, he's not solving or dictating or putting together a process that we're going to use in the future going forward, he's saying that for this particular vote that the commission took, putting that in front of us so we can agree, disagree, whatever, and then that issues to rest, and then when Jenny gets a chance to put how we want to do it together, and we decide on it, and then the future, they'll bring it up that way.
So a question, you're right, and that was kind of what I was thinking you were saying. With a negative vote, is there anything that needs to come to, I mean, if it's not looking to move, if it's not looking to a point?
That was my original argument.
According to what the attorney is saying, yes.
Okay, okay. Very good.
You tended to agree with me there.
Well, like I said, I mean, I caught a little tidbit here and there, but I'm not at all up to speed, I haven't had no conversation with the attorney here.
Sure, and I, so yes, that would be what Tom's interpretation is, to bring, whether it's a positive or negative recommendation, bring that to the council. So you have a motion to complete that, to close that loop, I guess the question for those who weren't at the planning commission meeting, they, they don't know who they are making that decision on, so if that's a, if that's a thought for the council, as far as, you know, typically then you would see the application or minutes from the commission or committee to review, to understand why a recommendation either way.
There's no urgency to do it tonight, correct?
No, just the planning, what the attorney said we should do.
Right, but I guess I would be in favor of putting this on hold till we can get more information of what was involved and what, you know, I guess that would be my. Yeah.
Sure.
My thing on it is just to have, I'd like to have a little more information before I. So a motion to table? So, well, I would, it's not the motion that's on here, but that would be my thought on it. I don't know what everyone else thinks, if they're, if they're fine with doing it.
Do you feel comfortable rescinding your motion and we could table it?
I thought the motion settled the issue brought up by the attorney, but if everybody else is not satisfied with that, I'm not willing to do what everybody else wants.
Well, let's vote on it, because we have a second, so we'll vote on it, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
So, just to clarify, so for now, all we're voting on is to support the decision that the planning and zoning commission came up with.
Correct.
Which was to reject an application. Yeah?
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion passes. City engineer, any, anything from him, or just nothing tonight?
I don't believe we have anything.
Okay. Very good, moving right along then. We'll move to new business, resolution, accepting donations. Jenny, do you want to?
I certainly can speak to this, just so the council is aware, accepting donations by resolution is the proper way to do that, so going forward, we will, we will kind of add that formality to that. Tonight, the donation we have is from DH Docks, and it is the donation of a dock system for Nisswa Lake Park. The information, the detail of the docks is attached, just for your information, but this will be, they will install it once they're able to in the spring, and then Matthew and the Parks Department will maintain it going forward and add it as a nice amenity for all the other development that's happening there, so certainly can answer questions.
I saw the diagram, I'm sure everyone has, it's, looks like a nice system. I do have a question about it, but I'll, I don't know if I should go, maybe wait for a motion, so.
We'll make a motion that we accept the donation from DH Docks for the dock system for the Nisswa Lake Park.
I'll second. So discussion, not, to be honest, I don't remember who it was, but about a week ago, somebody brought up something about putting a dock in, and something about, I don't remember, some legal questions about it. Have you heard anything about, any legal questions about at all? I just don't remember, but.
Are you thinking of the guy who had the?
Business.
No.
Oh, that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
Well, that was another one, but somebody brought up some, just like legal question, and, so I mean, I'm not letting make a deal, I'm just wondering if anybody else has any questions or concerns about that or has heard anything, and if not, we'll just move on.
Well, I had a question too, depending on where the dock goes in, it's nice to get a donation.
Absolutely.
Whether it's the DNR crew in the location, or is it on our side of the line, or just where is it going? Would it make a difference? It doesn't affect the donation, but it does affect where it goes in.
I believe it's going on our property.
On our side.
In front of our property.
It will be on our side.
I know what the question was. Without a, without a stairway to code to get down to the dock, are we accepting liability? That was the question. And do we need to investigate that? Has it been investigated? I mean, it, I don't know that it affects our vote here, but I wanted to bring up that we may want to, we may want to know, is if people are going up and down a brush hill or a ruddy hill or something, I mean, what, what, you know, we're going to have ADA trails and that, and then we don't have a, maybe a great.
Access to the dock.
That was the question, so.
Certainly.
Actually, that probably doesn't, we can, that can be separate.
Okay. I just.
And, and I have discussed with our insurance, just to make sure that they were okay with us accepting that, and they did not have an issue with that, it's not the, we're not the first city to have docks and things like that, so I did check with them, so overall, it's, it's not an issue, but certainly want to make sure that.
Would you just double check with them and let them know what we may have for an access?
Yes.
Just to make sure, you know, I think, okay. So, that's a separate item. So, any, any other questions? All those in favor of accepting the donation from DH Docks for a dock system for the park? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, that's wonderful, it's a nice dock system, it looks like, or layout. E2, resolution adopting a policy for the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act and appointing a responsible party.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution as presented, on this policy.
I'll second. Second by Ryan, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E3.
Already done.
Oh, we already done that. E4, resolution supporting local decision-making authority.
I'll make a motion that we accept the local resolution approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreements with the city of Nisswa on behalf of a city attorney and police department.
You're off one.
My off one.
You're on four. Resolution supporting local decision-making authority. I already got checked on, this one here.
Oh, they went to the wrong one.
Thank you, John, I'm glad I'm not the only one that slips up.
Guess I don't see mine.
Cool. That seemed to me like that had some kind of question, if it's.
Oh, this was, this is this?
I can just do a quick intro, and I think, I think John might have a few comments. This, I did mention this in a council update a week or two ago, just with a, provided article and some information, and I wanted to provide this to the council as far as if you were interested in approving something like this. I think John would have some thoughts, and he's done some more kind of review of it, certainly something not required, or, you know, we can, we can look at it some more, just wanted to share this information with the council and provide a little bit of detail about what's going on from the league.
Yeah, this was, when I read this initially, I read through it, and I said, okay, and then I, and then I came back to it. It just seemed funny to me that we're hearing about, we're asked to support a resolution for the league like everyone else that they're asking to do, and they're worried about local government decision-making, that the decisions be made with local government. So I got in touch with Josh Heineman, and I talked to Josh about it, and I said, what's all this about? And when I downloaded all of the items that were brought up by the House and Senate in St. Paul for last year, there's 10 pages of issues that they brought up and whatnot, with the various statute, or the various numbers addressing it, House and Senate numbers, there's really no explanation to it. The way Josh put it to me was this, this is the simplest one of them, to, there's a push to try and get, for example, internet, the, you know, G5 internet statewide, and it's something that, just like we've gone through before, in order for utilities to plow things in our right of ways and stuff, they got to get permission from us, and as a municipality, we can actually charge them for access to our right of way. We just went through that, I believe, last year with Excel and that. What Josh is saying, and the way it was explained to me was, there's something, for example, that you may want the state to be able to say, yeah, you can go ahead and do that, instead of me as the company that's chosen to do it have to pay to every single community, every single township, county, et cetera, with right of way, could kill a project, could hamper getting, for example, G5 into rural areas and things. Some of these things are, he said, yeah, you want to maintain local visit, local control, but to go through them, he's, he was curious, or he was kind of concerned that perhaps political entities are asking all of us to do their job for them, and, you know, they could, you know, we pass a resolution on, in this case, 10 pages of various things that came up, and we might not even know what they're talking about. So I, I'm concerned about it, I think we should table it, honestly, because I'd like to know a little bit more about, you know, what is it that they think local communities, or the state and local communities are, you know, where's the issue? You know, if it comes to G5, if it comes to, you know, certain things, might be better to let the state run with it. If it comes to some other things, like housing and that, I don't necessarily want the state telling me what I can and can't build in my, you know, and there's some of those things that are in there, and I can leave this with Jenny, and she can make copies for you, but when you read the issues and the current status, there's no explanation of what they are.
One of the bills that fostered this was a bill to allow antennas for cell phones to be put on light posts along city streets, and the city would have no say if they wanted them or not, the company could just put them in, period, and that would be it. That's what kind of kicked a lot of this stuff off. It didn't make it through, but it's just the idea of it. As Mr. Ryan points out, there are a lot of things that the state can do much better than we can individually, 50, 60, 70 municipalities. than we can individually, 50, 60, 70 municipalities trying to get together to figure something out where the state can, but at the same time, we still have to protect what we can do and what we should be doing.
Right. Well, there's one of them that was in here, for example, eliminates LGA for cities with sick time laws and other local labor regulations. Boy, that could get interesting, you know?
It's very broad.
There's a lot of these, like I say, it's 10 pages of stuff, and it's like, I don't know that.
That's the problem with this, when you go to state, though, is then all of a sudden all this other stuff gets, starts to get snuck in there, and what your original intention was is now kind of a political battle.
But isn't this resolution in front of us?
Yeah.
Not agreeing to that?
Well, the League of Minnesota Cities wants us to pass a resolution that says the decision-making should stay local.
Yeah.
And for the most part, maybe they should, but, like Josh was saying, in the, there are times when local authorities just can't, we don't charge people, for example, to put your cable in the ditch on city roads, but if a city wanted to, they could.
They do.
So, you've got, the potential is there on a huge project to make some substantial dollars, depending on how much you could charge that entity to make, to put, you know, to use your right-of-way. It could kill a project. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? You know, then that's what, as he explained to me, in Nisswa, it's not as big an issue because we have a lot of the stuff in the ground, but if a company can come in and expand their wired, their hard-wired network, then in those remote areas where they don't have the ability to do that, they can put that tower there as opposed to having to put it right outside here. And he was, you know, he said, that was just one entity where maybe you want the state to be able to say, yeah, we want to get rural connectivity going.
So, would we like, is there a motion to table, or?
Well, I, you know.
I'll move that we table item number four, resolution supporting local decision-making to be brought back up at the call of the chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To table.
I'll make a copy for everybody of this, and then I'll do some digging.
I kind of have my mind made up, but, yeah.
Okay. E5, resolution approving state of Minnesota joint powers agreements with the city of Nisswa on behalf of its city attorney and the police department.
Question?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution approving state of Minnesota joint powers agreements with the city of Nisswa on behalf of its city attorney and police department.
I'll second.
I thought we did this a couple of months ago. Is this a duplicate, or?
We did a version of it, yes. This is another request from the BCA, so.
This is the latest version?
Latest and greatest, yes.
Okay, the second question, there are two resolutions in here, the resolution on joint powers agreement, then the joint powers agreement authorized agency. That's at the back. Should we be authorizing both, or does one motion cover both?
The resolution covers both documents that are included with it.
Because they both have to be signed?
Yes.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E6 on the agenda, Rafferty's Pizza of Minnesota, Inc., application for on-sale wine license.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for Rafferty's for on-sale wine license as presented.
I'll second that, but it should be subject to the fees being paid before the open?
I would make it subject that we're all fees paid and proper documentation and procedure.
Yes, yes, absolutely, and it's a partial year license, because the license will redo on July 1, because they already have a 3-2 beer license, that's, we've gone through the background check process and all of that, so we just needed to do some paperwork, but we'll make sure that all of that's sent to the state as needed, and then they'll be a part of the renewal for the July 1 renewals for the wine and strong beer, so it'd be great for them.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E7, recommendation of Park Advisory Commission renewal of Gull Lake walking trail and biking trail cooperative agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the renewal as presented.
Is there a second? Johnson, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E8, recommendation from Liquor Committee, Spirits of Nisswa sign purchase. Is there any, I mean, we could go into some discussion, or if people are comfortable, we can move to motion and then second some discussion.
Mr. Chair, memory serves me, I thought several months ago, we approved the funding for the sign, that November, December, and is that the reason you have to come back, or what?
Being there was such a delay in getting the sign, and all the details worked out, we thought we'd just bring it back to the board and make sure that everybody was okay with it, but basically, we are asking for the very same motion that was back in November or October, whenever it was.
We did do it before, the numbers are just a little different then.
Right. If they are different, it's like very little difference at all.
Yeah. As I recall, it was kind of a tentative number at that time. It was like, this is kind of where it's going to be, so.
The council last fall approved up to a maximum of 70,000, and so this 62,941 falls below that, and we wanted to just provide the final details and a sketch of the sign. We received approval from the planning commission as far as the sign itself, and wanted to just bring it back since it had been a while.
I just want to make one little clarification there, the 62,490, that was just from the sign company, but there's also in there the electrical and some of the other things in there also.
Thank you, thank you.
But it is still below the 70,000.
Yeah, I think this is more of just doing due diligence, you know, and keeping the council abreast and not, just looking to do a good job.
We have long memories up here.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We have long memories.
That's awesome.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We don't have a motion, yeah.
Didn't we?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I thought Ross, I thought you had made one, somebody had followed.
All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the bid to go with Indigo Sign Works for the new sign at the Pickle.
Spirits?
Or the Spirits, sorry, for the $69,441 as presented.
Okay, second?
I'm on the committee, I'll second it, if I'm aware of it, so, discussion?
What was the final question?
$69,441, that's kind of what we've got into it, and electrical and miscellaneous items.
Are those all hard-bid numbers, Ross, or Brian, are they estimates, or?
That would be a maximum amount that we would be looking for. We would definitely, we're hoping that it would come in below that, but the numbers that we have on there are from last fall, so they might vary a little bit, but that's why I put in there a little leeway.
And then we're also applying the 18,000 that we received, so it's actually, the check we'll write will be lower, but the whole project, that's the cost of the project.
The cost will still be 62, yeah.
So.
What was the, just because I'm not involved in that, what's the Scenic is lower than the rest, and then Indigo, you know, why that versus the others? Just was there a reason?
I'll let Brian answer that, because he's done.
Sure, great question. Over the process of the last six months, working with the different companies and getting the correct answers, feeling that we got the correct answers from certain companies is kind of how we came up with the decision. We just felt that Indigo was a little more on top of it than Scenic, and we looked at the difference, literally, it's, I think it's within $1,000 if you, if you look at what they're offering compared to the other companies, and we thought, you know, for $1,000, this company, we felt had more knowledge, and we just wanted to make sure for that little bit of money that we got exactly what we want, so that is why we went with, made that recommendation for that company. I know there's a little more difference on paper that you might be looking at, but what they are going to do is they're going to remove our base, and that is like $950, so you take that off the difference, and it is not that much money. For getting a product that we feel is going to be superior over the other bids that we got.
Kind of felt we give maybe some better service with them, too.
Exactly.
Did we have the condition in the bid that we can have the right to refuse all bids if we wanted to? In case somebody comes back and said, I was $1,000 last, the one you awarded it to, and why didn't you pick me, and that's not a legal decision?
We just took quotes, we were able to just take quotes, and so, yes, it's part of that process. We can make the best overall decision for the city, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just want to say quickly, thank you to Brian for a lot of work that he put into that, and there were a lot of questions, and we went back and forth, so.
And in the end, it was, I mean, it was well researched and well put together, so I think that's definitely.
Yeah, we had some good questions about, and discussion about service, warranty, all of those sorts of things, and so, yeah, good job.
Next on the agenda, E10. Nope, I'm sorry, back up one. E9, recommendation from Public Works Committee regarding the purchase of a plow truck. John, you want to?
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the bid as we recommended for the plow truck, that we accept the dollar amount, we are $35,000 under budget on it, so.
I'll second.
This on the state bid list?
Big Brian? This is a state bid list, and the, like I say, we're $35,000 under what we anticipated the possibility based on previous state bid lists and stuff, so.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, E10, recommendation from the Public Works Committee regarding the purchase of a sewer truck. John, you want to lead us through these?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to table this one, there's been some discussion had, so I'd make a motion to be tabled this. There's been some issues or questions brought up as to whether or not some of the options that we're going with on this vehicle are correct, and we should maybe look into it a little more.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, recommendation from the Public Works Committee regarding the purchase of a supervisor truck.
Going to make the same recommendation that we tabled this matter, this one as well. Again, questions have been brought up about some of the add-ons and things, and whether or not our numbers are as correct or as good as they could be, so we're going to sit down, I'll sit down with Tom and Jenny, and we'll look at this one as well and bring it back. So, I'd make another motion to table.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Jacobson. Any discussion?
Do have a question. Just because this one was so reasonable, and where it came in, do we propose a chance of losing this bid if we table it?
There is a chance. For example, the Chevy, the contract under state bid for Chevy, Chevy has stopped that line for the year, they're not going to be working on the same truck line, the ones that they put out for, or that they agreed to sell at the state bid price, so that's why we didn't get a Chevy bid from the one dealer, because they're not making them anymore. So, even if you ordered it today, you're not going to get it. So, that's what Chevy did. So, when does that happen for Dodge or Ford? Couldn't tell you. I don't know.
Does the dealer follow the state bid exactly, John, or is it, because that one just, I mean, that's a really good deal on that truck.
The deal on that one is Mike's Motors up in Ely. He's just one, and it is a good deal on the truck. The question that we're looking at is some of the add-ons, the equipment add-ons, different things.
And I get that, and I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want us, are we going to lose, you know, delaying this, could this, the bid on the truck change, and now we're paying, you know, because that was significantly cheaper than Tanner's state bid, was it not?
Yes. It was a lot less expensive than the Tanner one, that we have.
I just don't want to.
Tanner's, if I'm not mistaken, Tanner's wasn't a state bid price.
Right.
Tanner's was their price. The state Tanner's does not currently, is not currently on the state bid price. What we've did, or what's been done, is people have checked with local dealers, and sometimes you can get a, you can get as good, or the local dealer is willing to match state bid, so then we would purchase it, for example, say, from Tanner's, keep the money locally. If you're looking at a state bid price and it's a substantial difference, that's a different story. But I, I don't know that we will lose an opportunity to do it. One question I had for Jenny was, at the end of the month, we have a workshop coming up, and if we have information on this that's acceptable, can we bring it up at that time?
I probably wouldn't suggest that, because the meeting's next Wednesday, and I just don't know realistically that we're going to get through whatever we need to get through in that time to post it, and then to have the information shared, just realistically, so.
So, I guess my, on both of these trucks, the sewer truck is a 12-week lead time, so they need that. If you say yes today, it's going to be a good 12 weeks before they build the truck or the chassis, both. So, it's a 12-week lead time. The reason with the plow truck, the big plow truck is a one-year lead time.
Right.
But we have a reserved spot, Tom was able to get us, we reserved a spot last year, so we don't want to lose that.
My only question is, if we table this and it comes back, and now it's a couple grand more, then kind of not.
Is the tabling the recommendation of the committee?
Yeah.
The recommendation of the committee was to approve.
To approve, the committee approved them, okay, and the committee did not have Mike's Motors bid at the time, it actually came in the next day, and we were all, all committee members were contacted, and when we saw the price, we responded to that email that said, yeah, we would be in agreeance with it. So, since that point, questions have been raised about if we can lower that price at all, if we can eliminate some of the stuff on it, and there was also a question that was raised as to whether or not the state bid dollar amount was that, the base model dollar amount was actually accurate on some of the other bids as well, and so we wanted to take another look at that and make sure that we did it correctly, that we went through all the stuff.
Well, for discussion, I'd like to withdraw my second, just for more discussion.
I'm sorry, I thought we had a second. I thought we already had a second.
No, I thought I seconded, I just withdrew the second.
We already, it was already voted, and I think Ross asked a clarifying question, but the motion was voted on.
Did we call for that?
No.
We called for the sewer truck.
We called for the sewer truck.
Sewer truck, but not this truck?
Not this. Maybe I'm out of myself, I typed it in.
Well, I'll second it. Because I think, I think there are a good number of questions that, that really should be looked at, and.
Is this the list?
I couldn't say for sure, but.
That's the one we got, that Mike's Motors is the one that we got.
And those are the options that you say we're not, you're not sure about the numbers?
The question about the actual base number came up as to whether or not on the Ford F-150 was the actual state bid price that we were given at one point, so. But the question on this one that was brought up, was brought up was about the various add-ons that we have, the accessory add-ons, if you will. STD being standard. And, and then where you see included with AJY. AJY is the, is the package, if you will, like, that they're using, as opposed to like, say, a Silverado package or whatever for a Chevy. And then AJY, just those dollars, or those things are things that are included with the actual package. Then the other items that are listed as with dollar amounts with different acronyms in front, those are the ones that were asked, well, do we need this or that, or can we cut that, or can we cut this? And rather than sit here and add about an hour to the meeting going through everything, we can table it and come, and Tom and Jenny and I will work on it and come back with the sewer truck and this one.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Item E12, Resolution Calling a Public Hearing on the Proposal to Adopt a Street Reconstruction Plan and the Intent to Issue General Obligation Street Reconstruction Bonds. Jenny, have anything you want to add to that, or?
So the, the process is?
Probably just for public input, we probably should.
Yep, absolutely. The process will begin. We're setting the public hearing date for May 9th, following the Public Works meeting, and that will be the opportunity that the community, the public can come and hear about the project, the roads that we're looking at reconstructing. And then at the public hearing, the council will approve the five-year street reconstruction plan. That's required as part of the bonding process. And both Heather Casperson from PFM and Mary Ippe from Briggs and Morgan are ready to help with all the necessary steps in the paperwork to, I believe, get to a July proceeds date, assuming we don't have a petition filed by any, by any member of the public for that process. But, yep, we will set the date and then just go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the, move the resolution for the calling of the public hearing on proposals to adopt a street reconstruction plan and the intent to issue general obligation street reconstruction bonds as outlined, well, as on May 9th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Carl Kramer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, Jenny?
Yes.
The letting of the bonds, could you ask them to please to take a look at the anticipated interest rate that we would pay, and give us a total amount that the bonds and the interest will cost us over, what is it, 10 years or five years we're going to run the bonds? So we'll get a total package price including interest?
Yes, absolutely. Can do that.
That would be great. Okay. Thank you, Don. Old business, we have nothing under old business this evening. Is there anything that the council person wants to bring up? Hearing none, we'll move on to council reports. Mayor's report. Really don't have any, anything to report on. Any questions about anything from the council?
I have one. Jenny has listed on April 24th the Board of Appeal Meeting. She listed from 1:00 to 4:00, but on my notice that I received in the mail, it says 1:00. Doesn't say 1:00 to 4:00. So you're not expecting us to come and stay for three hours when it says 1:00?
I am not, and I spoke with Gary Griffin from the county today, and he said that council is not required to be there, certainly welcome to come and to hear any of the questions that are asked, but the county will facilitate the meeting, and it begins at 1:00. I'm guessing that's why it's shown on the tax statement that way. But they will be here until through 4:00 for people to come in, and.
So we're here for cameo appearance only?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any flexibility with the county on their time, or they just set it? I mean, basically, everybody's at work during those hours, but.
People can, I believe they can set appointments with the county to go there and meet with them other times, but this is just the time they come here. I know they're in Jenkins that morning, and then they come here for the afternoon, so.
Very good. Okay, council members? Don, you want to lead out?
I may, by.
Okay, very good. Gary?
Nothing for me.
Ross?
The only thing, I guess, just FYI, the Terry and Brian and I took a trip down to the cities, and we visited municipals down there and walked through the stores, and I think they both agree it was a good productive day, and they came back with a lot of good ideas, and we're actually implementing, Brian has already implemented a lot of them, and we're implementing them at the Pickle in the next couple of weeks, so we're going to make some good changes, and got a lot of good, good ideas in what they're doing in the cities and what we can possibly do up here, so. Just kind of a for information thing, but it was, it was a good day, and it was, I think, I think it was well, well spent, so.
Is this like how things are displayed, or?
Yeah, we went through everything, displays, buy-in, how they buy, some of the deals that they do. We looked up, you know, through their store extensively, we got into their back rooms. One gal just went with us the whole way, we went to two of their stores, and just kind of, really just went through, and so, yeah, it was, it was, I think it was, it was well worth a trip, and, and I think we'll see, we'll see some changes, and it'll be nice to see if that actually, you know, increases profit and selling and stuff, so. It was, it was just a good day for everyone just to talk and concentrate on, on that part of the business, on merchandising and buying and stuff, so, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I heard what they had to say at the Liquor Committee meeting, and they, Ross included all, where it seemed like there was, you know, a lot of good things that they saw, you know, that, and some that could be implemented, and they saw some things where like, you know, that's, we probably should make sure we don't do those sorts of things, so. Yeah, so just to kind of get out and get a feel for what other municipals are doing, and what they see that works and not works, and, yeah, it would seem like a.
It's a good idea.
Great idea. So, John, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. You know, I do have something, a question I wanted to bring up, and just kind of before the council, but it's directed to Jenny. And Jenny, do you know timeframe-wise when the Bike Trail Committee is going to start public input and, you know, get set up to start getting, getting, you know, meetings set for the, so, you have any update?
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit, and Gary and Ross may be able to add more, but I believe the Gull Lake Trail Steering Committee discussed that they're working on putting information together, how they're going to communicate ads in the paper, or, you know, social media, that kind of thing. But I believe they're shooting for an early June timeframe to have some initial meetings, so doing, I think Matthew's doing some of that legwork now to get some details pulled together. But it would be June to start the process, and probably more engagement with the public over the summer while a lot of people are here. So is that a fair timeline?
Yeah, I'd say that's, you know, make sure we got everything, our ducks in a row, and.
You know, something I wanted to bring up is, you know, that, from, just from the feedback that I've received, and I don't know what other, what responses or input other council have received, but there's, I've probably gotten about close to a dozen responses from people, and there's kind of a theme that, you know, that they would like to see, like, more options on the map that gets put up for the community to, you know, talk about a bigger picture scenario, and then as far, and then look to see kind of where that goes, you know, but to not be real, not to be limited to just a very small picture of what the trail system could be, so, you know, I would like to encourage that when those, when the maps get made, that they would show, because there's a couple, three different things that are out there, that they'd be all shown on the map, and then, you know, one could be the, you know, this is the one that the committee's leaning towards, but this is kind of what a bigger picture could be for the community. I think that would be wise to do, so. Thanks for the update.
I do have another question.
Oh, sure.
The Planning and Zoning Commission had a request for a vacation of a right-of-way easement over in the Lake Hubert area, and it didn't make the agenda this time. Was there a reason for that?
Yes, because it, we brought it to Public Works last week, and they did also make the recommendation, but it needs, it requires a public hearing, and so there's a notice posting requirement, so Desmond, we couldn't meet that from the Planning Commission meeting approval to council meeting. So that's why we have to get that in the paper for two weeks, I believe, before we can bring it to the council.
Next councilman.
Yes. Next councilman.
Anything else, council members? I would just like to say again, Jenny, thank you for posting the announcements and upcoming meeting dates. I think that is extremely helpful. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Done deal. Thank you, everyone.